We all set? Okay, we'll call the Tremont Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 10th. The order at 6:01. Roll call, we have Renee Hodgson, Brett Witham, Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, our code enforcement officer Angela Chamberlain, and members of the public. Beth called in and she's not feeling well, so she's not going to be here, so I'll take a motion to excuse her absence.
I second it.
So you're second down there?
I second it.
Okay, motion on the second table to excuse Beth from the meeting? All in favor? Okay, we got it. Okay. Agenda looks good to me. Ben, you want to make a motion to adopt it as presented?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I second it.
Motion on the second on the table to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor? Okay. And the minutes look fine to me. Anybody else see anything else?
I think the motion we approved in the session is presented.
I second the motion.
Motion on the second on the table to approve the minutes of May 27th as presented. All in favor? Somebody going to abstain?
I will abstain.
Okay. Okay. Review the updated draft language for temporary sales. And Brett, as you probably know, we did discuss this at our last meeting, all this, and Angie made some changes based on suggestions from us. It looked good to me, Angie. Anything you want to say about it?
Nope. There was just some, they were all pretty minor, just removing a few words, changing a few words.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, and then we sort of briefly talked about the districts or zones where these are allowed and whether or not we wanted to have a further discussion about it, so I did come up with some data for you to look at for what's in the commercial fisheries maritime activities district.
Yeah, yeah. You're saying you have to?
No, I don't. It's in there, yeah.
Well, I see that in there. Temporary sales are restricted to CFMA residential business of harbor shoreline, right?
Yep.
But I don't see where it's allowed according to this, our ordinance for that zone, or standards for that zone. What am I missing? It's not, their commercial uses are allowed.
It's under the specific performance standards for temporary sales of food and merchandise. If you look on the second to last page of that memo, the strike through is the existing. And down at the bottom, 2D talks about where...
Under performance standards?
Yes.
Okay. 2D. Okay. You struck that out.
So I've just kept those zones the same for the new language. I didn't change where it's allowed. But if you wanted to further discuss whether those are appropriate.
Okay, here's where I'm confused. Okay. Accessory used to existing maritime commercial use, how would that be the case?
I don't think it necessarily makes sense because it's not at the table, it's not in those zones in the front, but in this little section of the ordinance that talks about temporary sales of food and merchandise, there's a little provision that says this is where it's appropriate or allowed. So I just kept it the same. I didn't make a change.
Right, right. What do you folks think, board members?
Just because it's not in one section, but it's got a section of it on that wouldn't negate it being in that zone.
I think the cleanest thing to do would be to make sure it's
In both.
In the text of the ordinance where it says these are what the allowed uses are.
Or it shouldn't be allowed, one or the other, right?
Well, I mean, yes, if you decide it shouldn't be allowed on that, it's definitely a issue.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, according to the standards, and the only other place it is, is in the temporary sales, sale of food and merchandise, right?
Right, that's the only place that it actually...
Yeah, which was kind of just thrown in there. Hell, well, yeah. So if we allow that, that means somebody could essentially set up a food truck in, down by the Bernard Wharf, for example.
They could do it now.
Yeah, it's already, it's already...
It's already allowed.
It's already allowed, yeah. So the question is, do we want to allow it?
Are you happy with those three zones that currently allow this use? Are they appropriate?
Man, I'm thinking that when someone put that in there, they had, they thought they had specific things in mind, and I'm guessing that's why they put, you know, like I, let me just say, I mean, when we have the, what is it, the Bass Harbor?
Backside Blast, I think, yeah.
It's an odd name, but whatever, the boat races?
Yeah.
That the wharf, there's food vendors doing it.
Right, right.
I mean, if you didn't allow it, you wouldn't be able to...
Right, right.
I don't think that'd be a good thing. I think you should allow it.
But isn't there something, we talked about special activities, right?
Last week.
Yeah, the last meeting, yeah. You're right, it used to be Bass Harbor days too, that's what they called it back then, yeah, before Backside Blast.
I mean, they can't be there for more, I mean, I do like the, you know, you've got to come to the planning board if you're going to be there for more than, let's see, six day, three days in a row, six days in a month.
Three consecutive months.
So it kind of takes care of this, I mean, I feel like the permitting...
The longstanding food truck.
Right, right, you can't just park a food truck, come to Doc and say, ah, we're blended.
We're here for the summer.
Right. So, I don't know. I'd probably, if anything, I'd put it in, I would put it as a permitted activity in the, you know, fix the issue you're raising, because somebody...
In each individual zone.
I would think, I mean, I would think that's cleaner. I mean, I think this is fine too, the way it's done here, but you could always tweak that later.
See, the harbor shoreline zone has the same issue. It's all maritime commercial uses, right?
No, they're going to sell off rules.
Yeah, I guess you got a point, yeah. You want to think about this one, and, I mean, we don't need to make a decision tonight on that. I think the rest of it looks fine, I just have concern about that.
So what would you, I'm just curious, so what would you, would you say no? I'm looking at, it's 2F, right? It's 2D in the old one, it's 2F, I guess in the new version?
I'm looking at the standards for the commercial fishery maritime activity zone.
Right, but I, right, right, and I'm looking for standards for temporary sales where permission is granted, and you're saying it's not, the corollary in those particular zones doesn't say that it is permitted.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, because it says, the only thing, all maritime commercial uses, or non-maritime limited commercial use up to a total of 2,000 square feet, which, okay, in total building area, provided it is an accessory use to an existing maritime commercial use for as long as the principal maritime use continues to operate.
Yes, you need to, you need to, you need to fix, you need to, if you wanted to clarify, you would, you would have to, you know, and any, you know, I don't know, temporary, are we calling it here? Temporary sales?
Temporary sales of food or merchandise.
Food or merchandise.
Yeah.
So, man, I look at the, you look at the zoning, let's see. H, harbor shoreline. Is that everything in blue?
Half the zones are in blue.
I mean, basically, it's all, it's like if you ever had an event on the wall, you know, I think of, I think of the Bass Harbor thing, you're there, and you couldn't do a, you couldn't have food trucks at the, on the pier, or any of the piers. I suppose you could have one down at, let's see, and then RB, whatever, and then just the other one.
Yeah, we know it's permitted in residential business.
Yeah.
What isn't, though?
CFMA was red. Yeah, it's the rest of the, I don't know, I think I'd probably let it go. Like, I would, I would not be adverse to it being permitted, and if we think we need to fix it in the, you know, which point you're making, then fine, but I'm not sure I would. I'm thinking that when someone did this, they probably had, like, you know, waterfront activities in mind.
I think that was the idea, and I kind of think that was the whole idea of that whole section of the ordinance, that they didn't really consider the implications of, like a food truck coming in and setting up permanently and that, or that sort of thing.
Yeah, which I think looks like is addressed now through the permitting piece here, because you can't, you can't set up permanently.
Pardon?
You cannot set up permanently without it, I mean, you've got to go...
Well, yeah, maybe not permanently, but you can do it...
Well, you can, but you've got to go get, you've got to get, you know, it's going to be reviewed by the planning board, as opposed to just, you know...
So the idea is to get something like this on the warrant for the November elections. Okay, and to do so, we have to get something to selectmen, I think by the end of August. So we do have time to think about this.
I think if we're going to, we are going to go with, I think we should fix it, because otherwise you're going to create, someone's going to bring a case or something and say, well, it's in this one, it's not permitted here, you've got to, you know, it should probably be fixed.
But how to fix it?
Well, you just, you just add a...
Add the language to each of them.
Yeah, you go back to the zones, and you say, you know, as to one of the, you know, whatever, and, you know, temporary sales in accordance with Article, you know, whatever.
Five.
Otherwise, my harbor days is going to be a real drag, Mark.
Well, that's a bar harbor.
I mean, that's, we don't care. Someone's going to have, it's going to be new T-shirts, though, come on.
Yeah, yeah, but that's like for a short period of time, okay, yeah.
Well, they could, I mean...
Or they could, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
And I think too, talking to Jesse about this, is it does sort of have something to do with where the town-owned property is, and if there are going to be community events on town property...
They're in those zones.
Right.
They're in those zones.
Yeah, yeah, and that's very short term, yeah.
But we don't want to eliminate that as a possibility of community events taking place.
So you want to think about it some more, or do you want to just say, okay, the way it is?
I would suggest that we perhaps have, Angie, look at how we would, if we were going to move forward, we would add it to the zones, just add it, and then see, and then look at that. I mean, and I guess I would probably do it, and then see, like, look, what's the risk, I guess, is that you get people kind of homesteading, or they get long-term permits, and they, you know, it causes problems, and you can always come back and tweak it, or if you get that, you don't, you know, we can, you know, these aren't rights, they're permits, they're not like, it's not a right to, you know, to do it, and if they're, if it causes problems with traffic or something like that, you just deal with it.
Ben, any comment?
No, I think it's a good idea, if it's going to be permitted in those zones, and it should be actually in the definitions of what's permitted.
In those zones, yeah.
In those zones.
Yeah, instead of...
And that way it would prevent any legal issues that later down the road.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, you just kind of want it to, you want it, you would just, I would button that up, and then, yeah, at least we have some, something to work with now.
Okay. Convince me.
I understand.
All right. Glad I came to this meeting.
We are too. We weren't going to excuse you this time.
I was on the chopping block this time around. I don't know what happened. I'm going to, I don't know.
Okay, anything else on that, Angie? Okay. Review the updated official zoning map.
I have large copies, existing and proposed, so they don't have to split.
Yeah, I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, I mean, like a Red Lion bird.
Yeah, not that thing. This one is existing, and then this one's the proposed, to point out the changes.
Okay. Why don't you point out the changes here?
So, I'm actually going to use existing, sorry. So these yellow areas around these wetlands are the wrong color, so these are actually just residential zoning, when they should actually be the dark yellow, which is a limited shoreline district. So he corrected those on that map. The park now owns this property, so that is going to be turned to green. We had all of those areas that extended beyond 250, see the 250 shoreline line, but that extended way beyond. There's quite a few of those places here in the blue areas, so he's corrected all those. The only two things I'm kind of waiting for to hear from D E P is there's some wet ones up here, which are probably protected, we need some kind of bumper, but it's going to take a little bit more...
Where are the wetlands?
These ones up here.
When you say corrected, you mean there was just an error in the colors, it's not that the, it's not that the...
Well, I think it's both. I think there was some error in the colors, because these are right in other places. I think that there may have been some intentional, like here, it goes to the road, so maybe somebody thought, oh, we'll just extend that district to the road rather than the 250. And the problem with that is you get lots that are not on the water, but now have to meet shoreline zoning, and they don't, and then they're non-conforming, and I don't think that was ever the intent either. If the idea was to have some...
Here too?
Yep, there too. If the idea was to have more restrictive zoning, then make a district that's more restrictive. Don't try to just, you know, sort of extend that shoreline.
Which is what happened here.
Yeah.
So all that's fixed?
Yeah, he, you know, easily was able to delineate where 250 was, so he just made that change, and then whatever the color was, he just extended to those areas, so like here is now residential, just the same as this upland area here, so...
But there's nothing in writing anywhere that reflects any decision that this was how people wanted it to be.
Well, the description of like shoreline limited residential says the 250-foot area, but it also has this little caveat that says...
Unless otherwise.
Extra areas.
Yeah, okay, so that's the issue we're talking about.
Yeah, so...
But we don't know what those areas are.
Right.
We have no way of knowing.
So in addition to the map, we'll fix that language, so it clearly is just 250, it's not areas beyond 250. Yeah, I had somebody...
Is there anyone going to be not happy about it? Is there anybody adversely impacted?
I don't, I don't think adversely impacted, impacted, I think it's the other way actually, because I had somebody at the end of Bernard, where is Bernard here? Oh, right here, this lot wants to do like two dwelling units, and they can't, because they have to have 300 feet of shore frontage, and they have no shore frontage, because they're not on the shore. So I think it will actually, you know, make things less restrictive for people that shouldn't have ever been included.
Okay.
But, you know, again, this has to be voted on too, so this will have a public hearing, and, you know, hopefully it will hear comments from people before, if there are concerns.
So the state's reviewing these right now?
Yeah, I've already talked to D E P about these changes, we're just sort of looking at these wetlands that don't have a buffer around them, but otherwise they have no concerns with the fact it's been keeping their minimum guidelines.
And to adopt the new map, do we have to go to town meeting?
Yeah.
No, I know you have some concerns about the commercial fisheries maritime activity zone in the one particular area.
Yeah.
So if we were to change the zoning there, let's just say, for instance, before we get too deep into it, you'd have to change the map.
Yes, so...
So is that something we may want to try to do before adopting the map?
If it's something you think you're interested in doing, we could do it all at once, there's no sense to do, do that amendment.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's the area where Ben lives, actually.
Ben, another, your problem, Ben.
Actually, this is easier. This whole area is commercial fisheries and maritime, and it's all dwelling units, but dwellings are not allowed in this district, so these are all non-conforming uses, so it might make sense to extend harbor shoreline down to like Pointy Head, so that they're in a district that allows dwelling units and other uses.
But if we were to change it, you would go to residential business possibly?
No, you'd go to harbor shoreline.
Harbor shoreline.
Yeah, which allows dwellings and commercial, you know, light commercial. But right now, the only thing allowed in commercial fisheries is water-dependent uses.
But we also know that it's not, we have a lot of, we, there were short-term rentals in that area too.
Short-term rentals everywhere.
Which are, yeah, which are, but here, that's, they're not permitted in that zone currently.
Well, the transient accommodation
Yes.
Language is not allowed. But I don't, we don't even define that, and I think that needs some...
No, accessory transit accommodations are not allowed.
Right.
Okay. So we do define transient.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, you're right, but that's only a person staying somewhere for less than seven days.
What do you get, Mark? Right now, it wouldn't be allowed there, and if you made the change, it would be? Is that what you're saying, if it goes red to blue? Is that what you're saying?
My, my point is, it's just not, structures that are non-compliant, I think it's also a use, is non-compliant use.
Oh, so they are doing...
They are doing it there, yeah.
Right. My concern is, if you have a dwelling in a district where dwellings are not allowed, you cannot expand the dwelling, so that means no decks, you can't make your house bigger, and you can't build a bribe, yeah, you're very limited when you have a non-conforming use.
Okay, let me bring up one other thing while we're talking about it here. We have a comprehensive plan. The area we're talking about there is known as the Villages Growth Area.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. On both sides, it's hard to see, because this is in color here, and so, and the maps, it's hard to really say where it is, but anyway, it says, Villages Growth Area includes the area surrounding Bass Harbor Working Waterfront in Bernard and Bass Harbor, and includes the buildup residential and business areas around Thurston's Lobster Pound in Bernard, it's on the other side here, blah, 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 and the gateway to Tremont from Southwest Harbor, and onto the State Ferry Terminal in Bass Harbor. Okay, so that's the area. According to comprehensive, comprehensive plan, it identifies that area as, will continue to serve as a central hub of economic and social life in town, where people will work, meet their daily needs, gather and socialize. This area will support new and future small businesses, such as retail stores, boatyards, marinas, restaurants, offices, and home occupations, and mixed-use development. Some new single-family homes could be built around the edges of this area, but to the extent mixed-use business and commercial projects and multi-unit residential development can occur in Tremont, they should predominantly be located in this area. So if we changed it to harbor shoreline, is it in keeping with what we have said in the comprehensive plan, or should it be residential business, which of course is going to raise another can of worms?
Even if you change it to harbor shoreline, it'll still, oh, I know, oh, you mean, oh, yeah, the...
Look at the standards for harbor shoreline, yeah.
But anything where there are 250 feet of water has to be a shoreline district, you can't make that residential business.
Okay, 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 yeah, that's right, yeah. So harbor shoreline, I think maybe we could, that should have been considered, we did the, that's a plan.
Harbor shoreline, I don't have it written for you, but it permits light commercial, I think I heard.
Yeah, all maritime commercial uses, non-maritime commercial uses excluding transient accommodations up to a total of 3,000 square feet in total building area. Okay, non-maritime commercial, yeah, okay, yeah.
Excluding transient, so transient's seven days or less?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is what most people rent for a short-term rental, rent weekly.
I was just thinking about how it was going to, it was going to impact the Pointy Head thing there.
Pointy Head doesn't exist. Doesn't exist, as of now.
Okay.
But the harbor shoreline wouldn't go that far down.
Yeah, I don't know that you necessarily need to extend it that far. I would stop it where the houses, like, that little point that Ben lives on, you come up the hill, and all of that to the left.
I wonder how that, like, how did that ever get zoned that way, with all those houses there, all this, these years?
The non-new houses.
The non-new houses.
Well, my guess is, you know, if you look at the history down there, we had Rich's Wharf, we had the Sardine Factory, we have the Ferry Terminal, we had the Boatyard there, we...
Yeah, it's all over here.
But, but this part?
Yeah, here. I see it over here, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
But over here, I don't get it, I don't know why.
Well, what I'm saying is, it probably, some, the thinking, I don't know, was to extend that...
It'd all fill in, eventually?
Yeah, that's going to, yeah, fill in, I guess, I don't know, who knows when was the original order, when was this created?
I don't know when that particular district was added.
When did Tremont actually have a planning board? No, I have no idea.
I mean, you, you should know.
Aren't these all houses all along here too?
I'm quite sure when my father bought this, in '46, there was no shoreline zoning, no ordinance at all.
Angie provided a nice little map here somewhere.
Tremont's all along.
That shows where the houses are.
Right on the shore.
Right on the, yeah.
Where is it? In, in the memo thing?
Yeah, it's right.
On the water.
Yeah, on the water.
How come this area right here isn't listed as Shoreland also? How come this is in yellow for Shore?
It should be.
Let me see it, hopefully we'll go.
Here we go, right here. These little black dots are all houses.
And these two lots here.
So is the question on the table whether we fix that, we address this now or later? That's the.
They're not even on the water, why, why would those be in the red?
Angie's just raising it as an issue right now and I don't think it's solved, but maybe.
The water.
From the nets.
It was just something I noticed when I was putting this together, that there was an odd area, but, you know, again, I think if you're gonna make a map amendment, it must do everything it wants.
So the way it is now, these houses are all in non-compliance.
What, tell me, tell me when I gotta move out, at least give me 60 days.
Stop packing.
Yeah, yeah, you got 60 days, but if you wanted to add on to your house or something, you would have to, uh, there are certain conditions you'd have to meet, that you wouldn't have to meet if you were in another zone, right?
Yeah.
I, don't, it's right here somewhere, change of use, I mean, change of non-conforming uses. Expansions of non-conforming uses are prohibited except that non-conforming residential uses may, after obtaining a permit from the planning board, be expanded within existing residential structures or within expansions of such structures as allowed in Article 7D1. Okay, I don't know what that is right off here.
Is that lot size?
Uh, that's 7D1, expansions, all new principal and accessory structures excluding functionally water-dependent uses must meet the water body tributary stream or wetland setback requirements contained in the main department environmental chapter 1000, section blah, blah, blah. A non-conforming structure may be added to or expanded after obtaining a permit from the same permitting, permitting authority as that for a new structure if such addition or expansion does not increase the non-conformity of the structure and is in accordance with Got that?
Well, it's funny because if you get a permit from the permitting authority.
That's you.
But it's not a permitted use, so it doesn't list a permitting.
Yeah, yeah, it seems, it didn't make sense to me either when I was reading that, it's like, wait a minute. But yet again, it says, obtaining a permit from the planning board, be expanded within existing residential structures or within expansion of structures as allowed in 7D1. It also raises the ugly head of grandfathering, right?
Yes, which, you know, I mean, we don't want to have a bunch of non-conforming uses.
No, I agree, I agree.
It's better to have them conforming.
I mean, I gotta tell you, I'd change the whole thing, I don't know why we would keep on the opposite side of the road, again, all houses, but whatever, I don't know why Commercial fishing, no one's gonna do anything with the road, with the road there. If the rationale is they're all houses, then these are all houses too.
Yeah, and the other thing is some of them are actually transient accommodations, I guess.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, the rentals on the end there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And look, we're down, uh, we, we know there are rentals down on the Shore Road there Resource protection, the resource protection Shoreland would stay the same, right? So the upside is we take a bunch of non-conforming structures and make them conforming.
Yes.
What's the downside? Is there one?
Does that mean, mean I don't have to move?
Not yet, Ben, but, but like Renee said, start packing.
And actually, it looks like the uses are the same in the two districts, so if it went to Harbor Shoreland, there's not really, it's.
Any change there?
You're not allowing a whole lot more other than dwelling units.
You're looking at the table.
Well, I'm actually looking at the, um, the text. All maritime commercial uses are allowed and both non-maritime commercial uses are
accommodation part. No, it probably makes sense to do this.
I can add it to the draft and bring it back to you.
Okay, that sounds good, and is this something we would aim to do for November or next spring?
Um, I'd like to try to do November, but I need to see how much of the text needs to be changed to go along with this. If it doesn't conflict with anything else that we're gonna be doing, then that's the reason why we couldn't do it in November.
Makes sense, folks, to have Angie, uh, take a look and do a draft for us of changes and look at it at a future meeting. You need a motion for that, Angie?
Sure, why not?
I just have a question, so we're looking at changing the CMA along here in Bass Harbor and then over across in Bernard, right?
I wasn't proposing anything in Bernard.
No, it just.
There's houses over there that are in.
Yeah, there's, there's more that have a lot of mixed types of uses, not just housing.
Okay.
Like the area kind of where Ben is, it's all just housing, so I figure.
So leave that the way it is, okay.
And if we were, let's say, uh, to leave the Shore Road as is and just change that one section along 102 there, that would be spot zoning?
It's not spot zoning if you're changing it to the district adjacent to it, if you were making it, you know, one or two lots their own special district, that would be
Not that I necessarily see a need to do that, I was just curious, yeah. Okay, we need a motion to ask our code enforcement officer to add to our heavy workload, looking at this and, and coming back with a draft of proposed changes to us to review to future meeting.
I saw move.
I second.
Motion is second on the table to have Angie prepare a draft of proposed changes to the Commercial Fisheries Maritime Activity Zone on the Bass Harbor side and come back to us at a future meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Anything else there, Angie? Well, since we've got these things on the table, is it something we want to look at for changing the transient housing stuff and figuring out how that's going or should we wait on that?
Um, I feel like that's gonna be a pretty big discussion.
Yeah.
Um, it's up to you, if you think that's something you want to start working on while you don't have a lot of other business.
I, yeah, I just meant the definitions, first of all, which don't seem to be adequate from the way it's written in here under the standards. To go into looking at weekly rentals and a registration process, again, that's a whole, a bigger chore.
A can of worms.
And I, I'm just thinking, if you're gonna talk about.
Can of snakes, go ahead.
Defining it so that it's not allowed in certain areas, then aren't you de facto sort of starting to regulate them? Should we have the full discussion instead of piecemealing it?
Well, they are regulated in these two zones in some, to some extent, right?
Yes, but if you look at those two zones and the area they encompass, we know that is obviously, we have 324 short-term rentals happening in those zones.
How many?
324.
Just in those zones?
No, in town.
In town, yes, I, I did know that, yeah.
Looking at where they're located, it's a lot of those.
It's something I, I did talk briefly with Jesse today and he suggested that maybe it might be time to ask selectmen if we want to go through with developing a registration process, send to voters with some change, you know, with some changes maybe, uh, the town of Camden. The town of Camden has, uh, what they're doing down there was suggested to me is worth looking at and I did a quick look and, yeah, there's some good things there, so. I don't know, it's not something we have to do right away. Probably would have to go next spring at all. We know what happened last time, but we only lost by two votes, so. Any thoughts, folks?
But that was just registration, was it?
Registration, yeah, yeah.
So, if you were actually stat coming up with some standards for the rentals, I think you might get a little more pushback on that than you would just registration.
Right.
But, but we would be holding public hearings anyway.
Right, right.
This might show Home Depot laws inside of Tyron, Texas.
For shit. Is that something you want to discuss at a future meeting? Our next meeting, we're gonna wait till after the, uh. After July.
After July?
Yeah, why not? Well, what, 'cause we'll have this to discuss too.
Another shoreline zone amendments.
Right. Okay. Any other comments, folks? Angie's all set. She wants to go see her grandson.
How old is he now?
He's graduated already.
Almost, almost a month old.
Almost a month old.
Yep. He'll be driving, getting in all kinds of trouble before you know it, Angie. Not that you ever did anything like that, right? Okay. Ben, you want to do your thing when you set a date for the next meeting, June 24th?
June 24th, okay, I make a motion via my next planning board meeting if there's anything to discuss on June 24th, 6:00 PM, Harvey Kelly Meeting Room, 6:00 PM.
Second.
Second, Renee? Okay, motion is second on the table, set date for our next meeting, 6:00 PM, right here, Harvey Kelly Meeting Room, Town Office, June 24th, 2025. If there's anything to discuss, and I think there will be because Angie's gonna come back to us for something, hopefully. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Take a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Okay, what, what time is it? I don't have a watch on.
6:55.
6:55? Okay, motion to adjourn, 6:55. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, Renee's second, all in favor? All right. Thank you, folks.